We note that all is in attendance except Mr. Christensen and I'm sure he'll be joining us soon. I'll turn the time over for the video, city video series.
Wanted to welcome everybody and specifically point out that we're well supported here by friends, family, elected officials. As you all know, every two years, our residents of West Valley get the, get to enjoy the exercise of their right and their responsibility to choose their leadership for their city. And here we are again, another two years has passed and we have new leadership. We have a new council member that is joining us. We have a couple of council members that were reelected and we have a new mayor as well.
I love West Valley. I was born, born here forty six years ago. Back then, we called it Granger. I still call it Granger sometimes, but I love living here. I love the community that we have. And I'm excited to be a part of it in this different way. I'm excited to work with the council and our new mayor and excited to be with them and to get to know them better and to, to make good changes in West Valley to help us progress and, and become better.
An expression of gratitude for this amazing city, Utah's second largest city, our most diverse city, one of our most rapidly growing and diversifying cities. It's an exciting place to be living. It's an exciting place to be raising my two daughters and creating a, a life with my wife and many, many other relatives here in the city as well.
It's good to see you all. Thank you for, for supporting us and, and for putting your trust in us. I really feel humbled by, by your support and, and your votes. I hope that, that I can live up to what you hope for me as well, that, that we can all work together to make a difference for our city as we move into the future and that, that I will, that I will be worthy of the trust that you've put in me.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And then I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm really excited about 22. I've, we have much to do in 22 and we're going to make this a great year for the city and for the council. And I have to agree with Jake that this council, we get along. We can vote opposite at a meeting, go to dinner and still have great relationships. Nobody holds grudges. And I really admire that with the staff and the council that supports.
Thank you. Just looking for any leaders. We don't have any special recognitions. We have our minutes from January 4th of 22. We have any comments or a motion on the minutes?
Move to approve those minutes?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I will note that Mr. Christensen has joined us. So we are 100% in attendance. Okay, the minutes pass. Now we'll move to public comment. So, public comment, please come up and give your name. We have your address on the paper. Speak to the mayor and it's not a question and answer, but we want to leave the five minutes up to you to give us your opinions or concerns. And we'll turn the time over now. We'll start with Randy.
Mayor, council, I lied. I told you I wasn't going to come back. I've been coming every Tuesday. Probably because I still haven't got no sleep. I'm not going to play the recording of these risers. I just got some suggestions. I don't know if they'll help or not. I'm going to tell you an incident that happened last Saturday, Friday, anyway. There was risers. There's cars going up and down our streets at night, all hours of the night. If they're not racing, you can still hear the rumble of these loud exhaust cars that they have. In the daytime, we just, we were done with the daytime stuff. It's more prevalent than anybody knows around here, except for the police officers. They see it. I'm pretty sure they see it, but they might not see exactly what I'm seeing. I wasn't born yesterday. This ain't my first rodeo. I've lived in West Valley City. I've told you a hundred times already, forty seven years. I'm almost ready to pack up and move, but there's nowhere to go because I can't afford to buy. I sold my house for over a hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. What am I going to get? I talked to sergeant today in West Valley that's on shift. I just vented a little bit and I told him what I'm seeing out there as far as, like last night, I couldn't sleep again. Wasn't because it was racing. It's because these cars, and I'm seeing it. I'm out there. If I was a detective, I would see this and I would be noting it. It's all over West Valley City. I went down 4,000 west off of 4,100, down to get me a drink and a snack of 35th. And I come back up and just through every side street in my neighborhood, you see cars parked, parked, people sitting in them at three o'clock in the morning. And this is just not three o'clock in the morning. It's all day long. The officer told me, and I understand him, are you sure they just don't live in your neighborhood and they're upstanding citizens that are working and just getting off shift? Well, then they're getting off a shift every half hour or every hour, same vehicles, same trucks, same SUVs. This is just my name for them, lookouts. The ones that are going through the neighborhoods, parking, watching, communicating, because you see them on their phones. And they all got their masks on. My suggestion is maybe put one person in charge to go out and survey. My relatives in Magna, they're telling me they got the same problem out of Magna. My son out in Harriman, they got a problem. It's, I don't know if it's more relevant here in West Valley because what West Valley is, I like West Valley, don't get me wrong. You know, there's still that saying, I can't sleep good unless I hear gunshots. Well, now I'm hearing what I think are gunshots, but it's not gunshots. It's these, they've got special systems on them now when they backfire. They pull up to a stoplight or a stop sign and you hear it, boom, boom, boom. And it can, it can go off a lot, like it's a AR-15 or whatever they call these guns. There was, I was with my grandchildren going from 4,100 south on Bangor and I know everybody's got their jurisdiction. By the time I got dispatched to talk to me, because I know they're, they got other things that are important, doing, you know, better things than listening to Randy. I says, yeah, I just had six risers. I could hear them and see them coming up in my mirrors and cars are all over in all the lanes and they're just doing this. And then they're gone. Well, sir, you seen them in West Valley? Yeah. Well, now you got to call unified because you're going through 6,200 south in Taylorsville, whatnot. And I said, well, I'm, now I'm in, almost in Harriman. I said, I'm in South Jordan. He says, they're, they're going everywhere. It's just not, you just wasn't that group of cars. 35th. Yeah, I know you guys can't answer me, but keep your eyes open. I bet you there's 30% of the cars out on the road and I'm not going to say 99% of the cars are all risers. But who our age or anybody that's working class is going to have a sports car like this with all blacked out windows, blacked out license plates? Who does that? These kids do. And it's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger and nobody sees it. I think maybe we butt heads with other city entities and see what they're going to do, even our state heads. Call the governor, call the failing city mayor, see what they're doing because they got a big problem down there too. I got more suggestions, but I just can't think of them right now because I'm still getting all riled up about what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing. And, and then sergeant today, God bless him. He's got 17 years service with West Valley. Hope he has another 17 years. But when we was talking back and forth, I felt like he was almost suggesting that I didn't know what I was talking about. Like I said, I've been around the block, same on the first rodeo.
So we're out of time.
We're out of time?
Yep.
I got one more.
Seven minutes instead of five.
Okay, let me, let me finish my one more minute.
No, you're past time. So next week, you can start over with a fresh five.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Let's do something about this. Let's take care of it. Let's bite in the bug.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, John Harvey, please.
John Harvey, Mary Lang, I, and council, I know I don't address you, but I stand before you today grateful for your service, for doing what you do as a council, the sacrifice for, for your family, your own time and to take care of us here in West Valley. Appreciate that. And just quick and simple, I just look forward for the, the change of this historic time with Mary Lang, you being the first female mayor of our city, of our wonderful city and look forward to being a part of, of that change in whatever capacity comes my way. And I thank you all for, for all that you do for us.
Thank you. Jim Bissak?
Good evening, mayor and council. No update. Well, what a mess down there. Three hours of discussion. They had people coming before. They voted to put it on the agenda. Now they have to vote for an emergency. It's going back and forth, back and forth. Thank God, our council is not as messed up as they are. When the mayor speaks at their council, the council members are sitting up in the back. They're joking, they're ignoring her. I mean, they're not giving her the respect and that just irritates me. At least here in West Valley, we're showing leadership. That's the second biggest city and you guys are all working together. Like was said in the video, guys can go out, you may disagree when you're sitting up there in the diocese, but you'll go out to eat and everything is like forgiven. Everybody has their own agendas, but you all work together. Salt Lake County, it's not happening, especially tonight. So that's all.
Thank you. Is there anybody that came in late that would like to come up? Mr. Curtis? And then we'll get Mr. Markham.
Yeah, Daryl Curtis. I, I listened to the study meeting today and I was really excited about the prospects for Bangor Highway, especially the going under. And I'd just like to be a big proponent of that. It's aesthetically pleasing. It looks so much better. I don't go down, I wouldn't go down 41st or 35th and just see a big freeway in front of me for safety reasons. I think pedestrians walking without a, going under an underpass would just be so much better. I just applaud that. Where I live, I'm right by a mountain view corridor and at first they had a big pile of dirt behind the houses and they decided to go under Selma Drive and that has just made a world of difference. And I, I really grateful for that because it is a mountain view. We, we live here because we enjoy the mountains. We enjoy the beauty of our area and it's just such a wonderful thing that have that you're even considering that it's not just when the freeway is built or when Bangor builds these overpasses, underpasses. It's not just for now, it's forever. And if we can't invest in our city now, then we are in trouble. I, I know when they completed the mountain view between 35th and 60th west, I noticed something that was very unique and a lot of people may not, not notice, but the power lines were buried. And even that aesthetically helps our city, helps attract people to our city and so forth. I, I'm just really grateful that you're even considering that. I would hope that you can work with Taylorsville to minimize the, the cost, work with a, with UDOT to minimize that cost, have them take a bigger share of the burden because it is something that we as citizens have to live with forever. So the decisions you make now, it's not just until, you know, it's built, but it's for a long time after that. So I just would appreciate your, your work in that area and thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Mr. Markham?
Hey, Mike Markham. I just want to throw my support behind the, the upcharge for streetlights. I think they're important. I live in a three house cul-de-sac with one on the edge of the cul-de-sac and I have a big bright yard light. And I've had neighbors that if it burns out, ask me when I'm going to fix it. Although that didn't keep a guy from stealing a trailer right off the back end of my truck sitting in the driveway, but it, it brightens things up. But I sat through the initial discussion about the three dollars upcharge and we'd already had like 40,000 and change allocated for streetlights out of the budget. I'm hoping going forward that this three dollars doesn't replace that. I hope there's still some money figured in the budget for streetlights, for improvements and updates because I've been in my neighborhood for about 45 years, something like that. And the streetlights are older, they're fine, they still work. If one doesn't work, I call, we get it fixed. But when they were put in, the poles were put in and the wires were just buried. They weren't put in conduit or anything like that. And because of my timeframe in the neighborhood, I can show them right where those wires go, right up and through a guy's backyard to go to the power box. So, you know, and if it was aluminum wire, which they were using back then, that corrodes really quick. So hopefully there are some plans for updating the connections and all of that kind of stuff. But I think streetlights are, are important. We need to keep them working and the more people that'll put yard lights out, the better off we are. So I don't have an alarm system. So there you go. I figure I've already been robbed once. I don't have anything left. So thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Mr. Pyle, do you have any comments today?
No ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on the council?
I do. I was expecting Jim to talk about the family fitness center, but I, I went, took my family to the family fitness center over the weekend and had a great time. The shower curtains looked brand new. There was one little item in the, in the men's bathroom. There was some granola bar wrappers that my 12-year-old picked up and threw away, but other than that, it looked pretty good. My wife and her daughter, my daughter will use the women's restroom and somebody forgot to flush, but that was, that was remedied. And, but other than that, it was, it was in pretty good shape. Is it Disneyland bathroom quality? I mean, we're not, we're not there, right? But it's, I've been in surrounding city fitness centers around West Valley, not, not just West Valleys. And I think we're, we're doing pretty good.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll move on to our first public hearing. Mr. Pyle, would you like to explain that?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So first item is a authorization for the police department to accept the 2021 or fiscal year 21 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant of $132,990. So this is a grant that we do annually through the Department of Justice and it varies usually a little bit, but it's usually in that 130, $120,000 range. It's used for various things across the years that fall within the application process and approvals. This year, the application was for the purpose of using the money for training and updated equipment for the SWAT team.
Thank you. Do you have any questions before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing for our JAG application. And I like these applications because it's just, we get money to be able to help our police officers. So seeing no one coming up, we will close the public hearing and I'll turn it over to council for comment or emotion.
Just have a comment. I, I read in here that we didn't have any night vision. I brought that up a week ago.
I'm sorry, sir.
That it stated in the, in the detail, the budget detail, there was some, I, I'd have to find the page, but it says that we don't have night vision. I think, can we correct that before we get it all done? So that we do, we just don't have enough. Just want to be clarifying on that.
Yes, absolutely.
Is there a motion with that?
Motion to approve.
With that add-on?
With that add-on, yep.
Thank you.
Second, second.
Thank you, Mr. Hume. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, we'll turn it over to the city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Petisamanu?
Aye.
Councilman Harmon?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor, Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our resolutions. We have resolution 22 dash zero two. Mr. Pyle?
Thanks, thank you ma'am. This is another police item and involves further grant money. This is a memorandum of understanding or MOU between the city and the attorney general's office and would provide $16,000 in funding also through the Department of Justice, but for the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force or ICAC, which we participate on and have for some time.
Thank you. And that pays the salary or portion of the salary of the person assigned to that?
Partially, yes.
Yes, okay. Do we have any comments or a motion on this item?
I move forward approval, resolution 22 dash zero two.
Second.
Thank you. We'll now turn it over to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Petisamanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to our new business. We have consideration of application S dash four dash 2021. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you ma'am. This final plat would request an administrative action and approval for a 15 lot subdivision, the Han subdivision, 4.4 acres at 3734 south and 3200 west. This is one of our early and first subdivisions approved under the, the RS zone or the residential sustainability zone and will include some items such as solar panel, power systems, increased insulation, tankless water heaters and a host of other items that were negotiated with the developer in exchange for some further density.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns or a motion?
I have a comment for that. Before we vote, I just want to let you know as Jimmy Wu and I are working for me to hang on this, this right here, this project right here, to just let you know beforehand.
Thank you.
I had a question and forgive me if we address this or there was a memo and I missed it, but I know there was a question previously about the fact that the appliances and some of the technology was Energy Star rated, but they were asked, someone had asked if the homes themselves or the construction was, did we get an answer on that?
Yes, and I, I thought we answered it then, but I mean, I may, I may misremember. My memory and impression is that the home itself is not, that it's only the appliances specifically. Second, I'll ask Mr. Pass for confirmation.
That was my question. But I would like to, sorry Jake, if I.
Yes, I'm done.
I, I would like to make a note that if we can work on that ordinance for that zoning, because I really think we need to clarify that the homes are Energy Star certified, certified. That includes a blow door test at four-way and at final. It really gives you a better sense of our standard of sustainability or efficiency, having that Energy Star rating on the house. So just a suggestion that we can look at in the coming few months.
Absolutely. I will mention that we did talk about that back and of course you weren't there when, when the ordinance was approved. And there, the reasons, there are reasons for either adopting or not adopting a certain energy level rating and there are different standards and that sort of thing, which we'll be glad to come back through again. And if the council chooses to take different action or modify that, that would be fine.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, let's make a note to put on communication. Okay, thank you.
And that being the case, I, I am satisfied that this did satisfy the requirements of the sustainability zone as currently stated. And with that, I would move to approve application S dash four dash 2021.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. We'll turn it over to our city recorder for a vote.
Councilman Petisamanu?
Aye.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll now move on to application PUD four dash 2021. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you ma'am. This is another final plat approval for administrative action only, the Cypress Cove PUD at 3540 west and 47th south. It would be 12 units on 1.08 acres and involves a property that was changed from zone RB or residential business to multifamily residential or RM.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any comments or a motion on this item?
The house is already gone.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, but motion to approve. application PUD-4-2021.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the item. We'll turn it over to our city recorder.
Councilman Northfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now we have a consent agenda, consent agenda with eight items on there. Are there any that need to be? Well, I know number one needs to be explained.
Ma'am, yeah.
Explain those first two, and then the rest are pretty.
You bet. So the only thing different about the first two significantly is the monetary amount. The one is for $19,000. The other one is for 17,000 and some change, I think. And other than that, they're all temporary construction easements and/or purchase agreements and acceptance of warranty deeds that go along with that.
Are there any questions or a motion on this item? And we can take them all as one or individually?
Move to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. We'll turn it over to the city recorder.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We do not have a need for a closed session, so we just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And we are adjourned. Thank you for coming, and we'll see.